Yeah, how do you think America is starting to achieve these things? And we just can't. I'm American, I'm very proud of America's politics. Again, uh, 2000, everybody in the government election is here. Hona State touch with election is here and local the city councils elections be hone in. Uh, in other words, your Sacramento city the which district one day. Election for your Jan Chavla, Jennifer Chavla, your India to hang in there. The bachelors are easy coffee there. Oh, yeah. Your FBI channel name Kambe Kita he got resignation day. Okay, he, uh, your Sacramento, Japan, Kamkar Dene Bache Pal Rane. Lekan Honen and the White Share City, Jerry Sacramento, the district one day which. In a new income, but on challenge, challenge, Karuna. Uh, my Jan Chavla, the girl, Karina, uh, welcome to America, Jen. We met at the weekend, you had an event for your district one city council kickoff campaign. Uh, but before we get into all that, tell us about Jen Chavla. Who is now candidate for district one city council in Sacramento city.
Thank you so much for having me. You know, I, we came here as you know, when we were younger, I was two years old. I'm the youngest of four daughters. Uh, it's just my mother and my elder sisters raising us. It was tough to to start out, but I watched my mother being very strong and resilient. And that's what led me to be the person I am. So basically learning that I can do everything that I put my mind to. And she taught me that most importantly, especially was a single mother, right? Without any help. So throughout my childhood, I was very interested in politics, very interested in what's going on in the world. Uh, I early on joined the debate team. I was actually in the Yuba City, God water recognized for public speaking. I they they gave me awards. I was never shy. I did a lot of performances for the Tia programs in Yuba City as well from 2000 or 2003. There's there's recordings of me there. Uh, so very involved with the community early on and in, you know, local governance, local politics, just debate and public speaking. Lots of clubs. And when I went to, I was the first in my family to go to a four year university. So University of California, San Diego, after after I graduated from Yuba City High School in 2003. So I spent eight years in San Diego and went to law school for one year, but didn't didn't like it too much. So I decided to leave law school, came back here to Sacramento and my uncle, who's an agent in the FBI. Recommended that I look into a job. And so I spent 13 years after I interviewed took a year for background in the FBI. But I spent 13 years in the FBI after that.
So, uh, just catching up on the FBI. Today, uh, the day we're actually meeting virtually is nine eleven. 24 years ago, FBI was called to duty to resolve and find out what happened on nine eleven. 24 years later, FBI still significantly involved in my understanding. But more recently, just yesterday, one day before celebrating nine eleven. We had a situation where a popular media celebrity, podcaster, social media activist. Well known individual from the president and vice president and just generally. Uh, he started a organization and he was representing them. And he was at a university campus and some individual shot him. And as it is Charlie Kirk is now dead. Um, sad event, turn of affairs. I know you're just entering local politics district one and there's a lot of local issues that you're interested in. But just from a general bird's eye view. Would you say that the US politics has gone down to such animosity? That we had, we're in a situation where we eliminate those we disagree with. I mean, last year we had two people try to eliminate Donald Trump, who's now the president. This year we've had Charlie Kirk and I'm sure you being in the FBI. You probably have a countless list of people who have been targeted or threatened. And many in the political field, many in commercial business field. I just at a general level, nothing specific, not trying to dig into your FBI work or anything. As an individual who's running for a local office. Do you think that we've deteriorated to that level where we can't agree to disagree?
I think that the fact that we have persistent violence on either side. Because again, there were democratic senators that were also murdered at gunpoint in their homes. Minnesota, so I do think that the persistent violence that has occurred has gotten out of hand. Now, whether there is political ideology, I come from an investigative background. And you don't know what you don't know. So we don't know for a fact, right? Why these killings have happened? We are assuming that it's political rhetoric. But from an investigative standpoint, it is too soon to say that it is political rhetoric. We don't know the culprit behind it until we reveal the motive. So I'm always one who's cautious to jump to conclusions about motives. However, it would be, I don't want to under like, I don't want to underestimate the amount of violence that has taken over our country in general. It is too much. It is just the school shootings, the the fact that people are being murdered in their homes, the fact that people are being murdered openly. In front of, you know, hundreds of, I don't know, maybe if there were a thousand people there, there were many people even on television watching. That to me is unacceptable. Okay, that's just violence. It's unnecessary and it's unacceptable. And there is no motive in my mind that would ever be good enough to justify that. So whether it's political rhetoric or not, I don't think that that's the most important thing. I think what's the most important thing is that we understand that gun violence and violence in general has gotten out of hand. Instead of pointing fingers, I think this is a good way for us to come together. And to work on saving each other's lives versus saying it's your fault or mine. I think that the idea behind violence is it's very easy to point a finger. It's it's much, I think, more rewarding if we can work together to find an end to violence, at least here at home. Because that's most important, first and foremost.
Right, um, I bring that up. I'm basically, these are the latest events that have occurred. Like you mentioned, the physical murders of the senators from Minnesota. Leaving the political side out, I'll go back to Saturday when we gathered for your campaign launch. I know there were people from both sides. So having met people from both sides of the political divide, gathered at one event. And it's easy to say that there's some people who politically may not be on your side, may not agree with you. But they were gathered there because of you. And the fact that they can come together like that on a common mission or cause. Where they support an individual regardless of our differences on political alignment. I was talking to one of them and he said, you know, sort of, hey, I've crossed the political line. So these situations are very comforting to know that, yes, we can come together on known issues. Regardless of what the tag we carry and regardless of that, I mean, the city council district is, you know, not a politically aligned. It's a, I will call it independent because you're not designated politically. It's not a political campaign seat. Anybody can run, they're not designate political parties, although we individually may be registered as a particular voters. Having seen those people there, it just becomes a shock to see what happened just yesterday. And but then reflecting back on Saturday evening, it's comforting to know that there is an element amongst us. Where we can look for the greater good and coming back from that and following on from this. Your campaign for district one, I know you work for the FBI. You've just mentioned how you got to the FBI. What is driving you to be a candidate for district one Sacramento city council?
So the the one of the things about I loved about working for the FBI is that we were FBI first and political second. So as soon as you walk into that door and you become an FBI employee for the day, when actually your entire life that you are an FBI employee. Your political affiliation does not matter because you don't get to pick, you don't get to pick sides when you're fighting for justice. Justice is justice. So whether you like the person or not does not matter. What matters is you have to bring criminals to justice. And we fought along the same lines for 13 years, at least in my experience. And the only time that things ever became a question in terms of political alignment was this year. And that was mainly because of the orders coming from above from the administration. So when the administration is telling their employees, the FBI. To refocus their efforts from national security or, you know, public corruption or crimes against children. To, you know, arresting undocumented immigrants. That is where political lines get blurry because I I would argue that we should be fighting all of these crimes equally. But to weigh one more than the other because of the way it looks politically. Then you have now used the FBI at your disposal as your personal police. And I think that that's the that's that's what people are feeling at this point in law enforcement in general federally. That if you don't have an allegiance to the current political administration, that you won't be successful in your mission. And that's the reason I stepped away. So I think my call for justice and equality comes from a much deeper place. And the reason I stepped away is because I could not go to work every day and fight for equality and call for justice for all. Without being targeted or singled out or told that I wasn't aligned with the president's mission or the Trump administration's mission. So that conflicted in my mind and what all I could do was walk away, right? Because I can't fight the entire system on my own. And 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 there are a lot of people who still disagree, but don't have the option to walk away. So my, the fact that I had the option to walk away was a blessing for me. But that didn't mean that my fight for justice was over, right? I I still have a fire inside of me that is constantly looking for justice and equality in the world. And that is literally the only thing that keeps me up at night. I don't care who you, who you are, what you look like, where you're from, what your political background is. To me, it's very simple. What's wrong is wrong, what's right is right. And I think a lot of us can agree on those basic tenants. Even every religious background can agree on those basic tenants, right? Murder is wrong, killing is wrong, starving children is wrong. These things are just wrong and there is no justification for these things. So for me, it's very simple. And so when I left the FBI, because I could no longer pursue justice and equality without a political agenda. I realized when I look around me locally, that there are problems that are not being addressed. And things that are not being handled with equality and justice. And that's where I feel like maybe this was my destiny or my calling. Because I can come to this dias, I can be at council, be impartial. Doesn't matter what political affiliation I've had or had or does not matter. Because this is not about politics. This is about serving our community as it exists, the diversity of our community, whether it's an economic diversity, racial diversity, religious diversity. Serving everyone equally and currently that's not happening. So for me, it's more important that we have a voice that represents all of us. And I think that was what was what you saw on Saturday as well is because that is truly who I am in in every ounce of my being. Is somebody who calls for equality and justice for everybody at all times. And it doesn't matter to me what your background is or what your political affiliation is.
Right, and not to get into the national level of politics. But reflecting back on last year, Lincoln, Lake and Riley was a very sad situation. And it actually drew attention to an element of the community. As specifically a criminal element. And in this particular case, the guy was an illegal immigrant as well as being a criminal. And we've had many such situations where we've seen. An individual who we would normally classify as a criminal, whether it be domestic violence or murder like what happened with Lake and Riley. Uh, go back to the Minnesota situation, the guy. Um, and I don't sorry, not Minnesota, but there was a judge in Minnesota, somebody walk in.
Wisconsin, yes, yes.
Domestic violence. Um, so basically domestic violence situation that guys would be definitely defined as a criminal. And the issue rose because the judge used her judicial powers maybe to. Control the situation and divert the people who had come to arrest him. My understanding of this is the sanctuary city concept is what's being challenged here. When there is a criminal, whether they be a citizen or a resident or an illegal immigrant, they are a criminal. And the current situation arises where if you're a resident and you're a citizen, you go to prison, you get sentenced and then you're released. The federal law at least says if you're a criminal immigrant, you get deported. On top of that, if you commit a crime, you definitely get deported. And in this particular case, I think maybe the lines are getting a bit blurred between illegal immigrants and humanity. And the compassion that can go with that type of environment and what we need to do. And the 1980s Ronald Reagan tried to address this issue. He legalized and he created a path to citizenship. Literally 40 years later, we have a bigger problem on our hands. So the illegal immigration, we really do need to fix, we need to sort that out. I believe it's unfair for the people who come in through the front door. Because they have to go through a lot of verifications of vetting, medical testing. And what we witnessed on the southern border is people coming in. We here are mandated to get COVID vaccinations. These people walking across the border, nobody's asking anything. So now we're dealing with health crises, polio and whatnot. I basically not taking sides, but I understand the causes of concern within the community at large. And yes, we can be compassionate, but we also got to look at the criminal side of it. And then when we're dealing with the drugs, which you guys in your FBI role have been, you know, dealing with immensely. We've had a couple of situations that have been broadcast locally. Not to drag that environment into this discussion of ours. So criminal to me means they need to be punished. And we started off talking about the murder of Charlie Kirk. So yes, we need to draw a line between crime and normal people and normal individuals. Uh, maybe economic refugees, maybe refugees from political hotspots. Yes, we need to attend to those, but we, anyway. Back to what's happening here, why you're running for a local district. What change you bring at the district level when you're elected as a district one city council for Sacramento?
The number one thing that I've heard since I've actually been called upon to run by many people, Republicans, Democrats, both actually. Uh, is that people are not being heard in district one. Their voices are not being heard, their their opinions are not being heard, their tax dollars are not being heard, quite frankly, right? So we pay some of the highest taxes in the city of Sacramento for district one. Just by the nature of the fact that we have the newest and most expensive homes being built. That's just the the way the economy is right now. That being said, we are not proportionally getting a return on what we're spending in our taxes. So the the money we put in from the taxes that come from district one go into a pool for the the general fund of city of Sacramento. That isn't equal, that isn't coming back to us in the same proportion that we're putting in. So that can be changed and that can be addressed, but that's what elected officials are for. That's entirely the entire purpose of an elected official is to advocate for the position and the people you're elected to represent. So that you can be, you can represent your entire district equally and fairly. So what people have come to me again, regardless of their political background is saying, we don't have community centers that we should have. We don't have youth empowerment programs that we should have. We don't have enough retail that we should have. We don't have businesses that would help our economy thrive. We don't have sports amenities that would bring tourists. We don't have restaurants that would bring people in like. Most of our district one residents, a lot of them are business owners that own businesses within our district itself. And if you don't do anything to promote small business, right? In district one, then eventually it gets washed out and it's harder to maintain as small business owners in my family know themselves. So to me, the most important factor is that people are coming to me saying, we are asking for this and we are not even being heard. It's not even, it's not that they're saying being told, no, they're not being heard. So I want to be somebody who says, I hear you now, I may not be able to promise you everything. But at least I hear you and let me see what I can do and how we can better our community together. Which is why I'm an advocate of participatory budgeting. But participatory budgeting is basically when the community comes together and decides where our tax dollars are spent. So it's it's easier said than done, obviously, but the idea behind it is that your tax dollars should have your voice attached to them at some point. Otherwise, it's just money that's being spent with with no real designation and it could go anywhere and you wouldn't be equally represented. So equal taxation for equal representation. Again, it goes all back to the same thing for same core values for me, equality and justice. And it's very, very simple and that doesn't have a color, religion, political background. To me, that's blind, right? Justice and equality that that has to be blind. So we need to be able to look at everyone and say, you have a voice, we hear you. This, these are the needs of our community based on what you're telling us. And these are the steps we're going to take to address those needs. That is currently not happening with our current representation in district one.
Okay, um. You had mentioned while you were at your event on Saturday, a local school issue.
Yes.
On on that issue, could you give more detail and how you probably would see that to be solved or addressed?
Yes, absolutely. And in fact, that goes back to voices not being heard. So here in Northlake, which is the newest developed area in district one. A huge minority population, mostly actually Punjabi Americans. We have a brand new school that falls under Twin Rivers Unified School District. It's a K through eight, it's been open since the summer of 2024. This is the second year of its operation. Uh, the capacity of the school is 1100, however, currently the admission is only at 600, so about half. Last year it was less than that, it was about three or 400. So now that our our we're reaching close to capacity, you have more traffic, obviously, we have more cars coming. Now this community was sold to people as a bike and walk friendly community. However, the street in front of the school drop off doesn't have any signage, any bike lane, any crosswalk, any speed undulations. And just about a week and a half ago, there was a child who was trying to bike to school from his house. Just across the street to the school and again, people buy these homes because of the proximity to the schools. So child was trying to cross the street to get to the school. There's no crosswalk though, and the child was hit. Now child is okay, thankfully, however, the driver who happened to be an immigrant woman was driving under the speed limit and had the right of way. When I heard that this happened, my biggest concern was that this was going to be framed as an immigrant driver issue. As we've seen, it has has been happened in the past, right? I did not want to allow that to happen because then they become this, oh, well, it's not a, it's not a school problem. It's not a city problem, it's not a district problem, it's a driver problem. So I immediately wanted to be that voice again, people are not listening. So I needed to be that loud voice to say, hold on a second. I was there, I saw it happen, I directed traffic and these are the things that were missing. And we can vouch that and cameras can show that the driver was driving under the speed limit and had the right of way. The child was in fact found at fault, but I don't want to place blame on a child who's just trying to get to school, right? At the end of the day, if you're building homes across the street from a school, you need to have a path directing a child to get to school. And if you don't have that, that's a failure on your designing, that's your failure on your surveying, that's a failure on the part of the elected officials. Who cut the ribbon to open the school. So my voice at that point got very loud because not only am I a member of this community, I'm on the HOA board here as as a director. I'm on the parent teacher council as a vice president for the school and I'm a parent. So I know first and foremost how important it is that my child who just learned how to ride a bike. Should be able to travel to school safely without feeling like she's gonna, without me thinking she's gonna get hurt because of a car who has the right of way. So that's what these measures are for, that's what our tax dollars are for. Literally what we pay for from our tax dollars is to ensure that this our children can safely get to these services that our tax dollars provide. So if our tax dollars are not being spent to ensure the safety of our children, then that means our voices are not being heard. And now whether that's that we're being deliberately ignored or that we're just not cared about, I don't know. And to me, it's the same thing, it doesn't matter. Because if our elected official isn't hearing us, they've already failed. So we need a change here, a drastic change. And it took me about a week of making a lot of noise. And I want to point out, I reached out to the council members office multiple times directly to get a word from them. They never responded. The only elected official that wrote back to me was the mayor. Who said that this will be handled urgently and immediately. And they finally did put some temporary measures in place. And just now have they added a design to include a crosswalk from the homes to the school. But had I not been loud, had I not been the voice for our community, this could have very easily have been framed as an immigrant driver issue. And that's the reason I am speaking so loudly and I want so badly to be the voice for our people. Because that's a perfect example of when you don't have a voice to 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 advocate for equality and justice for everyone equally. That's a perfect example of how things fall through the cracks and how we become vilified as immigrants.
I totally agree on the vilification component because recent events, we've actually just seen that. It becomes the example of the bad apple, a bad apple in a sack or whatever we want to call it. Can cause decay in the whole sack. So basically what we're experiencing as an immigrant community or as a general American community. We're experiencing some tears in our fabric, but it's a result of individualized, isolated events. That then come to categorize everybody. So totally agree on that part of it. Uh, from a issue that you're bringing up in terms of the school and the city. Just for general reference, my reference maybe. Uh, where are the gray lines between what the school district is responsible for? In terms of planning schools, preparing the environment and putting up the appropriate signs. Is the same invite and what the commission have a role in holding? So basically three components. Um, is it a planning commission? Is it the city council or is it school district? And how should they both three of them collaborated to maybe have avoided this scenario?
It's actually, it's actually more than three. There's a Twin Rivers Unified School District, there's a city of Sacramento. There is a planning commission that that usually their work is done early on. So at this point in the game, their their work is already done. But the fourth component is the developers who are still, who still have a stake in the game, right? Because they're still developing in our in our new community. So right now, the responsibility falls on Twin Rivers, city of Sacramento and the developers. And there are different things that fall under these three different responsibilities. So the developers need to not have construction vehicles traveling through the school, the school streets during drop off and pickup. That's irresponsible, especially with lack of signage. The city of Sacramento should never have allowed for this street to be traveled upon without proper signage being in place. That's the city of Sacramento or crosswalks. Twin Rivers Unified School District should never have allowed the ribbon to be cut without showing that these safety measures were already taken. So it is the responsibility of Twin Rivers and the city of Sacramento and the developers to work cohesively. To ensure that our children are safe, but again, that falls on our elected officials. I met with the chief of. I met with the Chief of Police of Twin Rivers Unified School District at my insistence and the engineers, traffic engineers from the City of Sacramento just this past Monday. And although they were trying to play hot potato with the blame game, at the end of the day, they had to acknowledge that this is a combined Twin Rivers and City of Sacramento problem that they have to come together to solve. So what they're planning now with the developers is to create a crosswalk that wasn't previously in the plans. But to me, it's a little too little too late, right? If you, as, if the elected officials had taken upon themselves, especially the current elected official, by the way, who spent twenty years on a school board. So as, and is currently an attorney. So as an attorney who spent twenty years on a school board for you to cut the ribbon on a school that doesn't have safety measures in place, I think is very irresponsible. And to not respond to a constituent who is asking for help and not to even come to the school to do a site survey with the staff, to me is negligent. And I think it, it kind of goes back to what I was saying is that our voices are not just not being heard, they're being ignored. And so to me, it doesn't matter either way, but it's more proof of the fact that they don't care. Elected officials do not care what's happening here. It took me to be very loud and very persistent to even get their attention and to include the mayor on an email to get a response from the elected officials. It shouldn't take that much. These are our tax dollars.
Right. On the planning and development and the future developments, we've had, uh, mi- many miles away from us, issues with, uh, water crossing over and flooding the whole district and it's a district that's, uh, close to both of you and I. Sacramento is not much different from that area. Um, there have been stories when I used to work downtown that a flood that it's like we could be under thirty feet of water. So being in the IT sector, we used to plan on having our key data systems above that amount of water. So basically, our data systems, our hardware would ideally be above thirty feet. Um, knowing the two commonalities and experience, the experience that's happening back in our native homeland, if that's the right definition for it.
Yes.
What planning can the city and the county put into play to protect the housing, uh, not necessarily only in District One, but around Sacramento? Um, I, from what I remember from the time I'd been in the area, Natomas was subject to flooding. And there were, uh, quite a few issues regarding that and the levees had to be strengthened. Uh, you probably are witness to the floods of, uh, eighty-six where, um, Yuba City and Marysville were impacted. Um, then not too long ago, uh, we had issues, uh, on the north side of Sacramento where we had flooding. And we've had the Consuminus River south of us. So it's not necessarily a North Sacramento Natomas issue. But from a city level and a county level, which is not going to be part of your, uh, portfolio for argument's sake, just for this position, but add a oversight for flood control. And knowing that it's an issue for Sacramento and specifically in Natomas area, what would you propose in, uh, you know, council member, uh, Jen Chavla could put forward in addressing those issues and making planning and development, at least for housing, because we have a housing issue. We have significant numbers of homeless. And affordability is a part there. So as a city council member, what could you do to alleviate fees for development, fees for construction, planning, but more so addressing the bigger issue there, which is possible flooding. There's talk of a hundred year flood and all that stuff. So I don't know the technicalities. I, I personally am throwing some of the words out that I, but I know Natomas is one of the flood zones. And there was a reason why some development was held out for a certain amount of time. But what, is that likely still to be an issue? Should we have significant flooding? I don't think we can alleviate it. But what could you do on the council to protect that area on, on a greater level, the whole Sacramento County?
So the Army Corps of, of Engineers have already taken steps to strengthen the levees along Garden Highway for this particular reason. And in fact, there was supposed to be a recertification of our flood zone by next year, based on the strengthening that they've put in. Whether or not that's enough, we don't know yet because they still have to recertify it. But they have been working pretty actively over the last couple of years at least to make sure that the levees are strong enough to withstand whatever may come in terms of a flood so that the levees don't break and flood our, our basin. Now, I remember nineteen ninety-seven, especially in Yuba City, when we were evacuated. We ended up going to paradise uh, at higher ground because of the risks of floods coming and how bad it was. But since then, I think the steps and the measures that they've taken to strengthen the levees have obviously paid off. And I've noticed in a very recent flood year that we had, and it wasn't a dramatic flood, but it was, it was a very heavy rain year that because of the measures that Natomas had taken, whether it was to include reservoirs within the district limits or lakes like we have here in our Northlake to capture water or the levees that we have strengthened, we didn't see as much street flooding as Elk Grove saw, which was very surprising to me. So that tells me that although Elk Grove and Natomas both have an equal, you know, risk of being flooded, that the measures that we have taken here in Natomas have all, obviously paid off. And whether or not we're in the clear, I don't know yet. I think that still remains to be seen with that reserve study that's going to be done. Hopefully by next year is what I'm hearing. I'm on the, uh, North, North Natomas Community Coalition, which talks about these things. So they are mentioning that by twenty twenty-six, we should have some kind of certification on it. But just by a human perspective of, of visualizing and seeing and experiencing, I haven't seen that kind of flood risk since nineteen ninety-seven, whereas other parts of our city and county have been underwater significantly, where measures, equal measures have not been taken. So the measures that have been taken clearly are helping. Uh, I think we just need to figure out how much more needs to be done.
Okay, um, I know there's a lot of, uh, work that the city does. There's a lot that can be openly discussed. There's some that happens in, uh, closed sessions, uh, but moving over to a discussion that was being had at your event on Saturday. And I think I need help just clarifying something. My understanding is we have elections in the process of a primary where when we have, uh, multiple candidates, uh, the primary is basically define, uh, set up to find the most popular or the most, biggest vote, vote getters. And in a scenario, let's say a particular district, we have four candidates. The two candidates that get the highest votes, they move on to the general election, which is in November. And for argument's sake, if we had an election for the sheriff or the attorney, uh, district attorney, it would basically be the same pool of candidates unless there's nobody running except for one. Or if there's only two, then they would move over to the, uh, general. If there's only one, they become the default occupant of the, uh, seat. What I heard, uh, mentioned on Saturday at your event was, we can take it in June. So for the audience, many of them who like me believe there's a primary and there's, and there's a final or the general. Primary takes out candidates and brings the top two vote getters into the general. Um, what is this concept? We can take it in June.
So it's interesting. I, I was surprised to find out about it myself, but it goes along with what I am trying to do, which is one, take money out of politics. Because money is what corrupts politics, I think, right? Because if we are trying to represent our constituents, the money that gets us in that seat shouldn't be a factor that plays into it. And oftentimes, campaigns cost a lot of money, as you are, I'm sure you're aware, okay? So Sacramento happens to be a fifty-one plus city, which means that in the primaries in June, if any one candidate, regardless of the number of candidates on the ballot, any one candidate gets fifty-one percent of the vote, they win outright. That makes the November election for that seat unnecessary. Now, it's a tall order. It's a big ask, right? Fifty-one percent, especially because primaries are very hard to even get people out to vote. But my argument is, in order to get, to, to, to get money out of politics, we need to get this done as soon as possible. Because for me, it's not about the money. It's about doing the right thing. And if the momentum is there and the people see the need for the voice and are already suffering because the voice is not there to advocate on their behalf, then that's even more reason for us to get this done as soon as possible. Because if we can get it done in June, then imagine how much money, time and effort we're saving the city and the taxpayers from June to November and we won't have to have this conversation anymore. It'll be a done deal. So I think with the momentum that we have, and as you said yourself, the diversity of population that we have backing this campaign, whether it's political background, religious background, cultural background, we have people from every walk of life, which is what I'm so humbled and proud of. With that support, we can take this in June, which is why we chanted Jen in June. Because I think this is the prime opportunity for us to show people that your voice matters, your money matters, your tax dollars matter. And an elected official should not be elected based on how much money they've raised. They should be elected based on how many votes they've gotten and votes and money should not be correlated, right? We shouldn't be able to buy votes. That's, that is literally in the fabric of our, you know, founding document, documents. We, we can't buy votes. So in turn, I have to ask, if we can't buy votes, then why is it so necessary to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in elections? That's why I'm saying I'm, I'm working very, very hardly behind the scenes now that I've left my full-time employment to talk to people one-on-one, go door to door, meet people, have events as, and mind you, I'm so big on this money factor. That event was mostly donated. So it was contributions from business owners. It was contributions from local community leaders. It was contributions from, you know, um, culinary students. It was people who believed in the movement that may not have had money to contribute or didn't want to put money, but were able to donate in kind, which to me speaks volumes that people are saying, we want to do something to get you elected, even if it's not give you dollars. We want to do something to get you elected. And that's the kind of momentum I want to keep up. Is that I want to recognize everyone for their contribution and their efforts and tell them that I'm hearing you and we're going to get this done in June because we shouldn't have to spend more money than absolutely necessary. Because this is bigger than money. This is, this is about our, our voice. And, and we need a representative that represents every constituent here equally. And currently we don't have that. So the sooner we can get that done, the better.
Got it. So basically the summary of that is it doesn't matter how many people are in the one of them is able to get more than fifty percent of the vote, then automatically
Yes.
The district person, whatever the title it is, and they're automatically elected. So the target or the key there, get it more than fifty percent of the vote in the primary.
Yes, yes, yes. And that means people have to get out and vote.
Going back to the event, um, exactly. And, uh, on that part of it, going back to the event on Saturday, um, there's many sort of people, like you mentioned, and, uh, at least I witnessed um, the diversity there. Natomas has become a hub of new development and therefore the committees that are up there are very cross-representative of the whole, um, district area. And Sacramento has been I've said it for being one of the most diverse cities in the nation state. Um, and yes, it was reflected on Saturday. Looking ahead from now to June, what type of, um, opposition do you expect? Because we started this off with the, uh, political environment. So just reflecting on that, um, obviously the, uh, any other candidates in this district are going to be for the same, uh, mission to win. So what is the competitive spirit, if that's the right way to put it, um, of the other candidate or candidates for this district? Is it going to be possible to do the fifty-plus one, uh, and become the elected or designated, uh, can, uh, occupant of the District One seat?
I think so. And let me tell you why. When the incumbent ran in twenty twenty-two, she got forty-eight point nine percent of the vote in the primary. And there were four people on the ballot. So that tells me that it's not only possible, but that it's doable for someone like me who has a lot of support from the diversity in our community. Now, if she wasn't able to get forty, fifty-one percent in the last election, my argument is this. She hasn't done anyone any favors. She hasn't helped us the way we needed to be helped. She has not heard our voices, so people are not happy. The likelihood that she's going to get fifty-one percent in the primary is not, is not good. However, the likelihood that I can get fifty-one percent is much higher if I can continue the momentum and get people out to vote. And that means also people registered to vote. Now, a lot of people, especially in our immigrant community, though they may be citizens, either aren't knowledgeable or don't know how or don't really, aren't really thinking about voter registration or when to vote, how to vote, that kind of thing. So that, I take that responsibility upon myself to get that knowledge out there and from between now and next spring. And make sure that everybody in our diverse community understands the importance of not only registering to vote as a citizen, but casting a ballot as early as June. Because if we can keep this momentum going, then at least people, we can get them involved and energized and, and get them to become not only, you know, an economic contributor to our, our district, but a, a political contributor. Because when you vote, you advocate, you know, your political side. And I think as immigrants, we need to speak louder and louder for our own communities. Because right now, we're not being equally represented where there are positions of power. So the more that we have, the more diversity we have in elected leadership, the better it serves our diverse communities. And the only way to get there is to get our diverse communities to be invested in the political process. And that's my responsibility as a candidate who is trying to represent people equally to get the word out. Now, obviously that does take time, effort and money. So I always call upon people to, if they can't donate money, that's perfectly fine. I can use boots on the ground. I can use phone callers. I can use people to get the word out within their communities or households to get people to register to vote. I even went to the Sanzaga Gordoara, uh, weekend ago. And they also emphasize the same thing, that anyone eighteen or older in your household that is a citizen needs to register to vote. These are the kinds of things that I think is so important to impress upon people in any immigrant community that now more than ever before, we need to be able to cast our ballots as citizens. Because our voices are not being heard because we are not asking for them to be heard. And the only way you can ask is by voting. So I ask you to ask for that. And that way I can represent you on the dais.
Okay, um, basically, I mean, we've had a varied conversation of, uh, your, uh, plans and, uh, work towards, uh, becoming a representative for Sacramento City Council District One. Tell, I mean, you've talked about the voting and the outreach that you're doing. How can somebody get ahold of you? How can somebody who's watching us right now reach out to you by a phone, by an email, or what can they do to get ahold of you?
I'm glad you asked. So you can, I, I'm happy to pass these around, but my phone number is well available. So it's nine one six two four five zero three one one. Did I get that in there? There we go. And my website is voteforjen.org. So you can email me at info@voteforjen.org or just go to the website voteforjen.org or call me directly at nine one six two four five zero three one one. And I am very good about responding and getting back to you because again, this is my full-time job. And I'm doing it very happily and I am trying my absolute best to get everyone involved because this is bigger than just a seat for me. This is, this is about our future as an immigrant community. And I want to make sure that And I want to make sure that we are rightfully represented.
Well, thank you for your time and thank you for the discussion and the little bit of education that came out of it. Appreciate that. Uh, appreciate your time. Wish you success for June. And from a general community's perspective, wish you that sort of June is the final vote count, fifty plus that works for you. Uh, in the meantime, keep doing what you're doing and we'll bring updates as we get closer to June and look forward to talking to you again. And thank you for this time. So wish you the best for now and look forward to chatting again as to where we're going and what may be a, a current issue of the day. So thank you for that.